If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation by Councilman Guy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's remain standing.
Our kindly heavenly Father, we come thank you for this, thank you for bringing us to this point in time. Thank you for watching over our families last night. Thank you for your watching over through the day. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless us, continue to bless this county as we go into this new year of business. We ask that you bless each and every county employee, each and every county elected official. Then, Lord, we ask that you watch over our country as we move into a new administration. Lord, we ask that you keep, keep this country united, keep us all united, keep us moving forward, and continue to be an example for the world. These and all other things, in the name of the Son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
All right, so let's begin with item 3A, which is December 2nd, 2024, council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve December 2nd.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Next, we have item 3B, which is the January 6th, 2025, council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the January 6th, 2025, council meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. All right, we, under item 4, citizens' comments, we did not have anybody sign up with the public hearing. We had two items there, we didn't have anyone sign up. Those two items were 5A, ordinance 2024-17, authorizing the grant of a right-of-way annizement of approximately .109 acres of real property with improvements, if any, located along South Carolina Highway 9, Chester, South Carolina, with county tax map number 1250000072000, and providing for other related matters. And then the second item under public hearing was 5B, which was ordinance 2024-18, authorizing the transfer of approximately 2.2 acres of real property with improvements, if any, located on Dawson Drive, Chester, South Carolina, associated with tax map number 069000019000, and providing for other related matters. So again, seeing nobody here asking to speak, we'll, we'll keep moving. So next is, under ordinances, resolutions of proclamations, is 6A, which is the first reading of ordinance 2025-1, entitled only, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of not exceeding $250,000 fire protection district improvement revenue bonds of Chester County, South Carolina, for the purpose of defraying the cost of improvements to the Richburg Fire Protection District, prescribing the form and details of the bond, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the bond from the revenues derived from the operation of the system, providing for the acceptance and administration of grants and donations, creating and establishing certain funds and accounts, and making other covenants and agreements in connection with the foregoing and other related matters. Along this, along that same related matter, we also have a resolution that could be approved with one, one motion. Am I right, Mr. Hester? One motion. So that resolution, you'll see on your agenda under 6G, and that's Resolution 2025-2, they go together, declaring the county's intent to reimburse itself for certain expenditures made prior to the county's, county's consummation of a federally tax-exempt financing. So do I have a motion for those? Again, we can do those with one motion. We can do both the ordinance and the resolution with one vote.
I'll make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-1 and 2025-2. Resolution 2025-2.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing any discussion, I'll call for the question. Those who are in favor, those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, all in favor. All right, next we have 6B, which is the first reading of ordinance 2025-2, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Chester County and P. 2280, the inclusion of certain real property located in Chester County in a multi-county industrial park, the provision of credits and gets fee in Chester County, in fee in lieu of payments, the execution and delivery of such documents as may be necessary to affect the intent of this ordinance and other matters related thereto. So that is item 6B. Related to that one, just as we did earlier, is also Agenda Item 6H, which is a resolution. It goes with that ordinance. It's an inducement resolution, and it reads Resolution 2025-3, providing preliminary approval of certain incentives to induce investors identified for the time being as Project P. 2280, acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates and other project sponsors collectively at the company to establish or expand certain facilities in Chester County, South Carolina, County, including a negotiated fee in lieu of ad valorem tax arrangement; number two, inclusion of the project site in a multi-county industrial or business park; number three, special source credits to be applied against fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes; and number four, other related matters. So do I have a motion to consider those two items?
I'll make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-2, along with the Resolution H. 2025-3.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hester, would you want to say a few words?
If you, the, so that project, it's already been announced, it's Primrock and GAF Warehouse, directly behind, behind the ICA Matt Tech Building. So the, we offered there, does council want to know what we offered in that deal?
Yes.
That was a 20-year fee in lieu, with a 6% assessment ratio, 30% SSRC for years one through five, and a 15% for years six through 10. And that's the only one on the reading tonight that we had not already passed an inducement resolution or that needed an inducement resolution.
Are there any more questions or discussion? Not, I'll call for, call for the vote. Those in favor of the motion to approve, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Next up is item 6C, which is the first reading of ordinance 2025-3, entitled only, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and special source revenue credit agreement by and between Chester County and Project 2285, providing for a fee in lieu of ad valorem tax incentive, providing for a special source revenue credit, creating or modifying a joint county industrial and business park agreement between Chester County and York County so as to establish or enlarge the park and other related matters. Is there a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion, we approve first reading of 2025-3, entitled only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hester, I'll ask you to speak to that one as well, please.
So this is Project Pocket Pass, inducement, let me look. When did we vote, May? May, May 2024, we voted on inducement resolution. There are two proposed buildings on this property. The project is the first building, which is not on Highway 9 frontage. This one offers a 30-year fee in lieu. It's a GFI partners, also rail-served warehouse distribution project that we had discussions about last year that actually had two potential projects. 30-year fee in lieu, SSRC 10% for the first five years, and a 5% for years six through 10.
Mr. Hester, King, for the, for the public's knowledge, can you explain to them, we've already been explained and we know, but could you explain to the public what it means to go on a joint agreement between Chester and York County when we do things of that nature? What does that mean to the public?
So anytime we offer the fee in lieu, the SSRC, we have to enter in, or into a multi, how about you come and explain that? But it's a multi-jurisdictional industrial park, but I'll let him do it.
For those of you who didn't hear that, that was my heart restarting. If you need a defibrillator, just come touch the microphone. All right, so a multi-county industrial or business park is a construct under the state constitution and South Carolina Code 41170 and 175. It effectively does a couple of things, and most companies want their properties designated as multi-county park. Counties will often do it even if the company doesn't for some reasons, but most companies want it. From a state tax credit perspective, it provides an additional $1,000 per job for the company if it's designated as multi-county park property. And the reason for the General Assembly doing that is it's about trying to, it's, it's about trying to create a regional economic development concept, and so partnering with one or more counties in a, in an agreement provides that sort of sharing of revenue and expenses. So that is part of what's required in the agreement in order to, to foster that regional concept. The host county, if you will, where the project is located, has to share some portion of the revenue received from that project with the partner county. And in the last 10 or 15 years, Chester and York have done most of their projects together. It is not required that it always be, whether it's Chester or any other county, it could be multi-parks in an individual county. In addition, there are two ways to distribute revenue in, essentially in an incentive arrangement. One of them is under the Fee in Lieu of Tax Act, one of them is in the Multi-County Park Act. Property that is designated as multi-county industrial park, the revenue distribution among the taxing jurisdictions can be different than if it is simply under a Fee in Lieu of Tax, in which case they would have to be pro-rata solely by millage. So that's typically the other reason that you see people place property in a multi-county park. The only other thing I will mention, particularly because we have a new council member, is sometimes people can get a little confused about the idea that a multi-county park is not necessarily a physical place. It is not what you think of driving into a cul-de-sac with a big sign and fancy lights and nice frontage and big shrubs, and, and there are 10 or 15 properties and, you know, you've got a big truck turnaround at the end. Multi-county industrial or business park property is more of the magic wand kind, where you designate the property. You may have a parcel here, you may have a parcel on the other side of the county, and even though it is multi-county, the parcels in one county don't have to be adjacent with the parcels in the other county. So particularly in York, you may have things that are on the north side of York that are designated as multi-county park property with Chester, with a piece of property that's on the south side of Chester. They couldn't be any further away from each other, but some of the properties in York and some of the properties in Chester, and they have been designated as being part of the park. And again, I'm happy to answer any more questions, but I think that's a pretty high-level description.
Thank you for, thank you. I, I figured people would probably want to know what that meant.
Again, the, the one that I normally get from most people is, well, where's the park?
Yeah.
And the answer is, it's kind of wherever the county says it is, and it doesn't have to be, again, an industrial park in the way we think of sort of your classic pull-up to it, and there are a bunch of buildings. It could be one building out in the middle of nowhere by itself, and it could be part of a park.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, is there any more discussion? All right, so we have a motion on the table to approve ordinance 2025-3, entitled only. Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Next, we have Agenda Item 6D, which is the first reading of ordinance 2025-4, entitled only, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Chester County and Project P. 2443, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates, whereby Chester County will enter into an infrastructure credit arrangement with the company, providing for other related matters.
I'll make a motion, we approve first reading of ordinance 2025-4, entitled only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Hester, would you want to speak to that as well, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is Project Home. If you remember, this is a spinoff of Sun Fiber Manufacturing Pillows with their fiber filling. They'll be occupying a former footprint building. This is a special case scenario using a fee-like credit for a 10-year period instead of a 10-year, 10-year fee in lieu. That had to, if you remember the discussions, that one just had to do with, they didn't meet the standards for the fee in lieu. Additionally, we would like to keep the 20% SSRC for the first three years. So we just created something that mimicked the same incentive as if they would have gotten a fee in lieu with SSRC.
Got a quick question on that. Are they actually going to buy the building? That footprint building has been leased several times to people, but they going to actually take title to this building?
Do you know they're not at this point? We'll ask Mr. Long to come up and answer that.
For this particular project, it's just the equipment, not the building, and they are just leasing it. So the fee-like agreement is just on the equipment that they're putting into the facility that manufactured the pillows.
So the building will still pay taxes?
Correct. We're not incentivizing the building.
So the, the building will still be assessed at X number of dollars?
They'll pay full freight for the property tax on the actual building, sir.
And then the, the equipment inside will be the fee in lieu of taxes?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-4, dash four, entitled only. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have Agenda Item 6E, which is the first reading, ordinance 2025-5, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Chester County and Project P. 2373, the inclusion of certain real property located in Chester County in a multi-county industrial park, the provisions of credits against fee in lieu of tax and payments, the execution and delivery of such documents as may be necessary to affect the intent of this ordinance, and other matters related thereto.
I'll make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-5.
I'll say.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Hester?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This was Project Light Sea Princeton New Energy. If you, if you all remember that, they announced on June 20th, 2024, and council voted on the inducement resolution July, July 16th, 2024. Fee in lieu offered was a 30-year fee in lieu, has an SSRC of 20% for the first five years, and a 10% for years six through 10.
Where is that located?
What's the physical address? It's...
It's on the Ecology Lane, and I can't remember, it's right at the corner of Ecology Lane and Beltline. I can't remember the actual street number, but it's a, yeah, as soon as you take a route on the Ecology Lane, it's right there on the right.
And it's... This was the one we went out to, several of council members, we went out, and Mr. Long, we went out to Texas to visit their site, and it's where they do the recycling of different lithium products.
And this is a case where they did buy the building, so it's not just equipment, but they did buy the building, and they do have a plan for future aspirations of growth and expansion. And actually, at our event last Tuesday evening, we actually met the gentleman who's going to be the plant manager of this location, and they are getting ready to have equipment delivered. So, you know, they're, they're definitely getting ready to start ramping up production, which is fantastic, exciting to see. And I did ask them when they did get all the equipment installed, we'd love to go back out there and visit this operation, and if council, any of the council members would like to join us for that, we'd love to have you to visit the facility.
The purpose of the question is, I want to make sure that all these things that we're doing, the fee in lieu of taxes, the 5% that goes to the individual fire districts or the fire departments are all taken into account.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
They, they would all be subject to the, the current resolution that divvies up those, how those funds are split up. Any other questions?
Is there any more questions or discussion for this motion? So we have a motion on the table to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-5. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Next, we have Item 6F, which is Resolution 2025-1, authorizing the disposition of certain personal property and providing for other related matters.
I move that we approve Resolution 2025-1.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious if, if, Mr. Hester, if you could kind of, sorry to keep calling on you, but you could kind of go into a little bit more detail about this, so people know.
So, so this is for two items, and as you know, any county property, we have to have a resolution for us to sell or take it to auction, dispose of it, if it's over a certain dollar amount. These two items that we're talking about here is going to be, one of them would be, is it 801, Mr. Mountain? So truck number 801 with Richburg Fire. This is authorizing Richburg Fire to sell, auction that piece of property off. That, and, and just for council's information, that was bought by their firefighters' association, and so that money will go back to their firefighters' association. And then the second item is the old scales from the landfill. So as you all know, I think my first year here, built into that capital budget, it was 2023, right, Mr. Darby, was the new, new scales for the landfill, and so those old scales that were taken out, I think they still have some value, and so our intent will be to auction those off.
All right, are there any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-1, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. All right, so we've already done item, items 6G and 6H, so that brings us to the administrator's report.
Since it's snowing outside, I'm going to be as brief as possible. I've got two introductions that I want to make, and then I know everybody's wondering, well, what's going on with the county building tomorrow and county facilities tomorrow. We will continue to monitor the weather, and we'll make decisions probably late tonight or in the morning as to county office, the late openings, closings, what we decide to do there, as well as our landfill and recycle centers, as always. We just, first thing we want to consider is the safety of everyone, but we'll, again, we'll, we'll monitor it through the night, so pay attention to our Facebook page and our website. We'll make all those announcements on there as soon as we've made a decision. So first, I want to introduce our new Public Works Director to council. If Ms. Devon Bagley would please, there she is back there, if you would please stand. Devon's a Chester native and a graduate of Clemson University, where she earned a degree in bio-systems engineering with a minor in environmental science and policy. She also holds a master's degree in biological science, is from Miami University of Ohio, and their global field program. Over the course of her career, Devon has gained extensive experience in various environmental and engineering fields. Devon started as, at South Carolina's Department of Health and Environmental Control, which is also formerly known DHEC, where she worked for nine years in the air, solid waste, water, sewer, underground storage tank, and stormwater sectors. She then became familiar with South Carolina's recycling practices and began instructing South Carolina students on recycling programs around the state. We're very thankful to have her in that, in that landfill, solid waste area recycling, by the way. She has served the Engineering Department of Chester Metropolitan District, where she worked on several key infrastructure projects and GIS mapping. Most recently, she spent her eight years as the industrial, I think it was supposed to be CWR, and where she was their pretreatment coordinator at Chester County Wastewater Recovery, where she ensured compliance, maximized resources, fostered relationships, and promoted environmental stewardship. She's passionate about her hometown and community service and has served on the Chester Downtown Development Association Board, as well as the Catawba Valley Land Trust Board. Outside of her professional life, Devon and her husband Jarrett, along with their two-year-old son, enjoy spending time outdoors, particularly on the water. So let's please welcome Ms. Bagley to our family here at Chester, and we look forward to great things from her.
Mr. Hester?
Yes, sir.
Who did she pull for, Ohio State or Clemson when it played?
She pulls for Clemson. She's a Tiger. Next, I'd like to introduce Amelia, I saw Amelia come in. Amelia, if you'll please stand up, Amelia Henderson. Amelia is now our gateway manager, and I'm, by gateway, I mean the building. Amelia is a native of Lancaster, South Carolina, and brings a wealth of experience in public relations, digital marketing, and event planning with a background as the senior publicist at Brand New Script Agency. She successfully led campaigns that elevated brands and fostered impactful connections there. She holds a master's degree from Syracuse University and has worked across diverse sectors, including television, news, nonprofit, food and beverage, mental health, and community development. Amelia has showcased her expertise through key roles with organizations like Bayhaven Food and Wine Festival, Aurora Rogue, and Southern Dish 101. Amelia is a proud mother of two and a devoted wife, balancing her professional achievements with her passion for family and community. So we are super excited to have her at the gateway, and she's hit the ground running, so please join me in welcoming Amelia. And that concludes my administrator's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hester. All right, next, so we have Agenda Item 8, which is our consent agenda. We have two items on that, that's 8A and 8B. 8A is third reading of ordinance 2024-17, 8B is second reading of CCMA 24-15.
I'll make a motion, we approve the third reading of ordinance 2024-17. That is the property right-of-way at the Losfool Library.
So with this being the consent agenda, Mr. AG, do you want to also include the second reading of, of the, the item 8B as well?
Uh, yes, I'll do that.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a, and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Next, we have Old Business, item 9A, is the second reading of CCMA 24-13, John Agee, request tax map number 124-0000052000, located next to 3302 Langestra Way, Richburg, South Carolina, 29729, to be rezoned from single-family residential district RS1 to rural 2 district R2. The planning commission voted six to zero to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve the planning commission on second reading of CCMA 24-13.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Let me clarify what that is, because I can't vote, but for the sake of argument, I'm a retired veteran, and there's an issue that I had to do to get my property all zoned, one thing, for my military retirement. I'm not selling it, I'm not going to build anything, it just had to be done, so that's the purpose of it.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. And Ms. Donaldson, if you'll note that Mr. Agee recused himself. All right, next, we have 9B, which is the second reading of CCMA 24-14, Joaquin and Joanne Conclaves, request tax map number 1200000066000, located on 2482 Clinton Road, Edgemore, South Carolina, 29712, to be rezoned from rural 2 district to rural 1 district. The planning commission voted six to zero to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve the second reading of CCMA 24-14.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Hester?
This is one that, so I would, I'd like for you, if council pleases, to call Mr. Jeremy Ward up. This is the one that there were many questions about. Council actually had some action items and sent one of Mr. Ward to find some answers, so we do have that information for you all. so we do have that information for you all.
Chair, council, I will briefly cover the, the new items of information that were requested of me. If you have any questions, the property owner, Mr. Goncalves, and some of his family is also in the audience. So his request is to split up this one property into three parcels in order to construct two extra houses on those for the purpose of his family to live in. The council had asked for a survey that shows where those approximate property lines would be, particularly in relation to the pond on the property. The property owner provided that survey, it also shows the acreage of what each lot would be, and he also provided some architectural renderings of what the houses may look like. I'm here if you have any questions, again, as is the property owner.
So the original house is the one on the far left?
The original house is actually the one in the center.
In the center?
Yes, sir.
So these, these lot sizes are really, from looking at right here, the lot size is really no different than the surrounding lot sizes in the, in the area?
Yes, sir.
Sizes are pretty much all the same?
You are correct, the sizes in the area, most of the surrounding parcels are zoned, are won, similar to what the request is for this, and they range anywhere from half an acre to 10 acres, it's kind of a mix.
I know we've had that question come up in other instances. Is there anything that would be, that has been cleared by, you know, DOT as far as the driveways and how close they are within the property and stop it and go it and that kind of thing? I, I just know it's going to come up at some point.
No, ma'am, that's an excellent question. If memory serves, when talked with the Department of Transportation, they recommended that there be at least one shared driveway, if not all three of them, on the, on the same driveway, but that's something the property owner would have to sort out with the Department of Transportation prior to receiving any building permits, and that would be the same with the septic tank and wells, they would have to clear all that with the South Carolina Department of Environmental Services prior to receiving the building permits.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the one thing about this is normally I very rarely ever go against the planning commission, and I think Mr. Ryan was chairman when this all went, but every person around this piece of property lives in my district and, and errant to agree with the, at large, and they're absolutely opposed to this, absolutely, 100%. And I just don't quite feel comfortable doing this, because the pond at one particular point in time was a water point for the fire services and had to have access to that, and that might still be the case, but you have a tremendous amount of opposition to this in that community.
Mr. Agie, can, can someone enlighten me to what the issues are, in case I'm missing them, because I want to be fair, but I don't, I don't see the issues, because you-
Yes, sir, I will be happy-
Someone enlighten me to what the community has issues with?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll be happy to give a recap of what was brought forward to the planning commission at their meeting when this was brought up. If memory serves, you only had one of the neighbors come, it's the neighbor to the rear, who had had Mr. Smith, and he had previously had some issues with the new owners of this property regarding where the property line was, that seems to have been cleared up. He also has concerns about the quality of the stream, or other streams that flow near this property or from the pond potentially, concerns regarding the water quality, potentially with the new septic tanks, with two new septic tanks there. And he, although he was the only neighbor adjoining this property, he was at, at that meeting, he brought a letter from, I believe, four or five of the other neighbors constituting three households surrounding there that were complaining regarding this rezoning application for a few reasons, one of which was the increased growth in the general areas as a whole, one of which, one other neighbor said that, and it was the Devinnies, which would be at the north parcel, if you're looking at the, at the plat there, and that they are concerned about the location of the new house to their property line. There were other concerns too, I don't remember off the top of my head, but those were the main ones.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to, to that point, I have the, the planning commission minute, the planning commission meeting minute, the other concerns related to the well veins, the septic as it relates to the pond, and in an existing barn with an apartment. There were two letters that were brought to that meeting, it appears. One was that it was too close to the property line, so there was those two.
So with the layout and the survey that we have, is it too close to the property line from what you see on this layout? Is it, is it, or will it be too close?
It would not be too close, again, close is a little subjective, and I think that was the point of, of the complaint, but it would comply with the zoning side setbacks for this parcel.
Okay.
All right, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor of the second reading of CCMA 24-14, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, so we have a vote of five to two in favor, so the motion carries. Next, we have new business, which is item 10A, which is the bid acceptance for the animal control shelter, Mr. Hester.
Yes, sir, so we did receive our bids, and so what I'm requesting is that council votes to approve the low bid for the animal shelter, which is from Montgomery Construction Company out of Lexington, South Carolina. Low bid was 4.162695 and 4 cents. Just, and I'll, I'll kind of give a roundabout run-
What was that number?
It's 4,162,695 dollars and 4 cents.
Thank you.
Not included in that number, we have three alternate bids for a generator that would run the entire facility if there was a loss of power, an alternate flooring bid, which is an epoxy flooring that would make cleaning, stains and cleaning much easier on staff than just a regular concrete floor. And then, instead of putting turf, well, I'm sorry, instead of putting sod in the dog runs and play areas, we would actually be putting, we'll call it a state-of-the-art type of turf that's made for these types of facilities. Those total alternate one, 93,250 dollars, and this is, this is a very large service on this building. Alternate two, the flooring is 41,963 dollars, and alternate three is 91,725 dollars. The total of the low bid plus all the alternates by the, by Montgomery would be 4,389,633 dollars. We have a total of 4,651,000 and zero, 4,651,000 that was committed to this project, so that leaves us 261,367 dollars for contingency for the project. All falls under what council has approved for the project back in August of last year.
What would be the timeline?
Very good question, so if this, if this bid is accepted, we're looking for early to mid-February to break ground. If the weather permits.
And completion?
I would have to go back and look at what our completion, we put within the, the parameters of the bid, I want to say, I'm robbing, we had 240 days roughly, if that sounds right. Do you remember how long we gave Jessica? I'd, I'd have to go back and look, but that, just like any other project, there's a timeframe that they have to complete the project in, that's set within the bid documents.
Can I ask a question about it? I don't have any issues with the price and the thing, but somewhere along the line, Jeremy and I had a conversation, and there's somebody wanting to build some houses out there on Armory Road. Is this, is this going to be an issue with that, and this going on the same place? Are they close to each other, whatever?
I don't, I don't know where they are in relation to each other precisely, but-
Yes, sir, Mr. Agie, the houses on Armory Road, which is a proposed subdivision that has not been approved yet, they're roughly two miles away.
Two miles.
I believe, I think this is at the very tip of Armory Road.
It's at the very, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, it's not close.
So this picture we're seeing, is this kind of what it's going to look like?
Oh, I'm glad you saw that, I was reading my paper and didn't look at that. So that is our final rendering. Only thing that potentially will change is over the door, how we've got Chester County Animal Control, that may be a little, look a little bit different, but yes, this is a good, accurate picture that represents the roof lines, the breeze, what we call the breeze block, which is a natural ventilation, as well as screening material, as well as how the planners would look. I think I see the sidewalk in this picture as well. Couple of renderings. Pretty state-of-the-art facility when it comes to some of the technology that's being used within, in the walls.
So I, I, I really like the way this looks, so my question is, in the future, with this, to me, it looks like a modern type architectural drawing, I don't know the terminology, but I like the way it looks, so in the future, you know, any buildings we build, you know, at some point, we got to build a sheriff's department, a jail, are we going to stay on this type of, are we going to try to continue to look modern like this, or will we, going through the county, kind of keep our new, newer buildings looking?
I, I think that's a really good, good question, I think it depends on where things are being built, you know, the architecture in this case lends itself to a lot of the functionality, if that makes sense. I will tell you that the team, and I'll use the word the team, because I will, probably every department head has been involved in these discussions, Harold's been thoroughly involved with Jessica and Stacy and their staff, our, the architects that we have used on this project, and I can, we sat through week after week of meetings where we hashed out design and looked at things and go, that's ugly, we don't like that, you know, that doesn't function, you know, so there's been a lot of effort to go into the color scheme, the functionality of things that you see there, cleaning, ease of maintenance, that was huge when, when planning. And so I think it kind of lent itself, and there were some times where we sat down and go, that's really ugly, we don't like that, you know, let's, let's work on the color scheme, or let's work on these walls and change it. We even tried other different types of material, and a lot of it just came back to functionality and ease of maintenance, and so we came back. But good question, and I think this team with, with Harold and with department directors in place, we take a lot of time on these projects. This wasn't a, just a knee-jerk, hey, this looks great, let's go.
This looks good, I like it.
Thank you.
All right, is there any more discussion? Well, we, we would need a motion to approve.
Please, a motion and a vote to approve.
I'll make a motion we approve the bid for the animal control shelter.
I'll second. If I may, Mr. Chairman, could we amend that to approve the low bid as well as the three alternates plus contingency that will equal a total of 4,651,000 dollars?
I rescind my say.
I rescind my motion.
All right, so the motion's been taken back off the table. Is there a new motion?
If I can remember what Brian said.
Need me to help you there? So, so really, so we can all encompass this, a motion to accept the low bid, including the three alternates for a total, plus the contingency for a total of 4,651, which is what you guys have approved for the project.
Gotcha, I'll make a motion we accept the bid, the low bid of 4.162, 4,162,695 dollars and 4 cents. It's a total amount committed of 4.651 with a contingency of, how much was it again?
261,367.
261,367.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the low bid, including all three of the, what did you call, Mr.?
Alternates plus contingency.
And, and the contingency, so we have a motion on the floor to do that. Is there any more discussion? Well, request tax map number 0790510005000, located at 590 Beltline Road, Chester, South Carolina, 29706, to be rezoned from general commercial district to single-family residential district. The planning commission voted five to zero to approve.
I make a motion we uphold the planning commission.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Next, we have item 10D, which is a statement regarding municipal building and fire codes. Councilman John Agie.
Mr. Hester and Ms. Workman and I met last, last week, 10 days ago, and had a conversation about the building municipal codes and the fire codes. In the state of South Carolina, there's the Board of, Commission of Code Council, the board chair of Commission of Code Council, and then there's the fire codes. The international building codes and the international fire codes are state law. They have to be adopted by any municipality in the state of South Carolina. Mr. Hester and Ms. Workman and I met, and I think we've gotten everything worked out on this, because there are some issues with this, and hopefully, we're going to have that all taken care of. But at any rate, I really appreciate him, I really appreciate Ms. Workman being receptive to this and, and getting this taken care of. It all basically comes back to the men and women in the fire service and going in buildings that are not code acceptable or fire code acceptable, and that is very important. Today, actually, one of our firemen is in the hospital, and, and she really had a bad time, so I try to make sure I think about the men and women in the fire services in this county, and I want them to be able to go in and do their job without risking their lives, and that's the purpose of this whole thing, so, thank you, Mr. Hester, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
All right, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 11A, which is our airport commission appointments. We have four qualified applications, and you'll see them, you'll see them there on your paper. Is there a motion, the floor is open, four motions.
I'll make a motion we appoint Mr. George Whitesides to the airport commission.
Mr. Chairman, you could, with only four appointments and four spots, you could make a motion to accept them all if council so chooses.
Is that Patrick?
Yes. I guess we could do nominations for, that's how we're going to do the, well, what's the best?
You could read, you could read the airport commission appointments, because you only have four candidates and you have four spots open, and then ask for approval of those, acceptance of those.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
For Mr. Whitesides, I'll amend my motion, will that work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll amend my motion, and I will make a new motion to appoint Mr. George Whitesides to the airport commission, Mr. John Davis to the airport commission, Mr. Henry Lester Sugar Jr. to the airport commission, and as well, Mr. Rusty Darby to the airport commission.
Is there any discussion? Is there, we'll need a second.
I'll second it, but I would like to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
These are fine, fine people on- These are fine, fine people on this, but there are only four. And is, is there some reason there's only four as opposed to other commissions that have seven members on it?
These, I'm sorry. These are the ones that are up for renewal on that commission. They're all actually currently serve, had been currently serving members, all in good standing. I'll come, I think Mr. Roach, I saw him. He's in the back recommending that they've, they, their service has been good. They're good members of it, and so.
So, this is a reappointment?
This is a reappointment.
Of all four?
How, how many members on this board?
But, but somewhere, I've never seen the seven names.
Five total members, right. And they should be staggered, but for some reason, these got out of whack and weren't staggered totally.
Mr. Vaughn, there's five appointees on that commission, and that is set by a state legislative act of 1941 that defines the powers of the commission and specifically gives the numbers and who appoints them.
I got a question. Ain't, ain't nobody like, people like me on that board? Can my people get on that board? Did they apply for it?
The, the, they have to put in for a open spot. They had to fill out the form, and then it has to be approved by the county council.
So, Mr. Killian, to answer your question, there was only five total applications for the four spots. One of them was not qualified because of conflict of interest for, regarding airport business.
So, one more question, just to, you know, me, I'm all about fairness. When was this advertised and how was it advertised? Was it advertised on our website?
That would be something our clerk de council would have to answer that question.
So, my question is, I'm, I'm just piggybacking off Councilman Killian. How does the public know that they can apply to, for these appointments?
So, again, I think that she can answer that question.
So, the term expirations are on the website? So, everyone's a term expires. Anybody can apply for that if they're interested?
So, to piggyback off of Councilman Killian's question, so in the future, since we only had five and one was unqualified, in the future, when this happens again, Mr. Killian just needs to let, or the public just needs to, can they apply now and the application sits until the next appointment? I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm trying, trying to get an answer to his question so, for the public, so they'll know if they are interested in one of these boards, how do they apply in a timely fashion and manner?
So, let me answer your question with kind of a broad statement. In the past, how boards and commissions have been handled, because they're all council-appointed, council-elected, or voted on positions, for the most part, unless they're legislatively created, most of you have appointments based on your district. This one's a little bit different. So, these fall under council, so these, myself, Ms. Workman, our staff will not be affected. However, we have been looking at boards and commissions and offering some suggestions on how council could handle those things going in the future. I think that you're right, that maybe we have a process in there to where these things, council, council gets this in an email that there's a board and commission coming up. That's one method of advertisement. The other is posting on our website for those boards and commissions. So, one of those two would be our only way of reaching the community with the, the commissions.
And I do note that Ms. Donaldson has also posted on Facebook or the, or website if there's open vacancies for different boards and commissions, because sometimes we have trouble finding folks, you know, to serve. So, you know, I know that that has happened, and I've seen it. You know, it's just all about public interest.
But a black ain't never been on that board. A black person ain't never been on that airport board.
Maybe wants to never apply.
That's what you say.
I don't know. I don't handle it.
That's what you say.
Do you need to pull the applications? Do we need to?
Well, my, 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 my whole point is, the whole point I'm trying to make is anyone who wants to be on that board, I think it needs to be a process in place so that, in fairness, so that anyone who wants to be on that board, whether they're black, 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 white, blue, green, yellow, they can apply for this board. So that, you know, it's, it's, as everyone's counting, you never know who wants to be a part of something. So, I think there needs to be a process put in place, a schedule for them to, at the end of the day, we make the vote on who's gonna be on the board, based on the, the applications. Am I correct? So, if we, if, if, in fairness, if we give people the time and the right to apply, and we have a schedule, then I don't think we can, there could be no argument.
Ms. Donaldson, was this one posted publicly on Facebook, or was it posted on?
It was not posted publicly, but it's all the members wanted to be reappointed, and they, they had already spoken to. So, I didn't, this one was not advertised publicly.
Okay.
Mr. Hester, it's my understanding that this, this appointment is in line with the rest of the commissions in the county. I'm not sure the politics of it, but I'm sure that's the way it operates, just like y'all say. Anyone can apply to that board, any color, any race, any gender, can apply to that board. And then it comes before the council, and the council votes on the individual that has applied. Now, the reappointments, I don't know how it works.
One, one more question. Ms. Donaldson, was all council members notified of this, these appointments, these open positions, and that we needed, that we were taking applications? Okay. Mr. Guy, to your point, I think those are two methods that we could ensure boards and commissions that are non-council member-appointed. So, by that, I mean, if you don't have a, a district appointment, right, and those are on you guys to make those. And again, we, those are ones that the clerk will reach out to you and ask for. But when other boards and commissions come available, it seems that the direction, what I'm hearing today is we want to make sure that all council members know that there's open positions on one of those, and that we advertise those to the community as well for applications.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. My, I don't have an issue with anyone on this paper. Let me make that clear. I don't have an issue with anyone on the paper. My, my whole issue is, I'm on this council to be a councilman for everyone in Chester County, and I want, I try to find fairness. So, just out of fairness, I think that there needs to be advertisement on all these appointments of this type so that whoever's interested, I don't know who's interested, but whoever's interested has a chance to be considered. That's, that's what I'm saying. So, I'm, I'm agreeing with your suggestion.
And I agree with you too, but I, I think also in, in some certain terms, because I think about it a lot too with different committees, that it falls on us as well to make sure we have all of our people, or any, anybody else, I say our people, our appointees, and anything else that's coming up, so we can kind of keep in the back of our mind, if somebody comes up expressing interest, "Hey, I got something for you if you'd be interested in serving on this committee." So, I think a lot of that responsibility falls on us as well.
Mr. Hester.
Everything.
The issue with this is, Mr. Roach has been at the airport for a long time, ever since he's a little boy. He's been at the airport, done a wonderful job of running the airport force. The issue is, there's five members of, of the airport, and he just said, well, one of the little issues is that since 1944, right?
Since 41 or 42 is when the legislative act was created.
So, Chester County has gone through a, and the whole country's gone through a lot of change since then. It would seem to me logical that each council member would have an appointment to the board, that we could change that instead of having five. And that may be a state law, but for the sake of argument, each council person would have an appointment to that, no different than the mental health board or anything else. And that way, everybody is able to have a say-so in how the airport's run.
Originally, that, that commission was actually decided by two members from the city and three members from the county originally. In 1995, the county, the city never did do their honest part to support the airport, according to state arithmetics monetarily. The county has always picked up the bill in place of the city paying their part. 1995, the city leased all the operational agreements to the county for 99 years. And at that time, it was decided that the commission, I mean, the council would be the deciding factor of the five members. So, they assumed the two members that used to be appointed by the city. I have the paperwork on all that from the city. But you're absolutely right. That commission is no different than any other commission in this county. It's set up the same way. Anybody can apply for it when it's open. I have no say-so on who goes on that commission.
I do have a say. Thank you, Mr. Roach. I think, I think we got it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
So, Mr. Hester, I think it would be helpful for our council if, if we could come up with a policy for how we advertise and, and make sure all council members know that these, these appointments are coming up, the terms are expiring. So, is that something you could do for us?
It is. The role, and so not to convoluted, I can, I can foster the process, but this role falls under the clerk de council that works for council. So, again, myself and the clerk de council, the only two council employees, boards and commissions fall under the clerk de council's role. So, I can assist, along with our county attorney in coming up with this, but it'll have to be led by our clerk de council. Now, I do think that council needs to also think, this won't be an overnight creation, because once you, part of this will be a vetting. You'll have to vet the application process, and which been administrative type, which we, we currently do to make sure that there's no conflicts of interest or minimum standards that are required or met district-wise and so forth. But you're also gonna have to, uh, there, there'll have to be a process created that'll allow, if you have 20 applications and you've got two spots, how do you vet that down, or how does council handle that? Is it a, is it an open discussion on that? Is it a nomination? So, we, we can work through that process. Yes, sir.
But we need to do that too, because a black person ain't never been on that board. And that's while I'm speaking up. We need to have somebody black on that board too now.
Well, as part of that, Mr. Chairman, if you look at what you just got through saying and said, can we look at and see if we can expand that board, each council person have an appointee on? Because these, these men are wonderful guys. I know, I know every one of them, and they're flyers, they, they have airplanes, they do that. But there are other people, like Mr. Killian says, that, that it could be interested in this, and, and I think, I don't see an issue. Chester County changed since 1941.
Mr. Chair, just, uh, one more thing. I, I mean, out of all honesty, I, I cannot sit up here and say that I have not been asked about why each one of our council people does not have an appointee on this board. I've been asked this several times to Mr. Agee's question. So, maybe, Mr. Chair, that's something you and the clerk could research for us to find out if we could, since this falls on the clerk. And could y'all work together or something to find this information out for us, to find out if we can change this to something so we, each one of the council people can have a represent, a representative or something of that nature?
And just for clarity, Mr. Roach, you did say it was a state, it was something, this is like a legislature five board. This is something they created, so it's kind of, I don't wanna say out of our control, just to ask, just request if we could add to, add to that. Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we were good on that.
We can have the county attorney look into that.
So, I was gonna say, could you do that and send it to, to?
Yeah.
Counsel?
Yes.
So, with, um, so we've got some work to do. So, let's make sure that we follow up on this, Mr. Hester. We will need your help, and Ms. Workman as well. So. Of course, Chris. So, with that, we do have a motion on the floor to approve, in a second. Do we receive a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to approve these four applicants for the airport commission. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, there is some more discussion. So, after we approve, if and when we approve these four, what we're discussing will go into the next appointment cycle, how we do it the next time around.
Yeah, I think these are two, I think these are two-year terms, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Is that correct? Four-year terms, okay. But for any other commission that is not district-appointed or?
Yeah, because since we only had, you know, this many appointees, yeah. So, the next time around, we should have an.
Right. It'll be a year before these, anything like that would come up again. So.
Gotcha.
Unless someone resigns from a board or so forth. But yes, we need to, we'll get something working soon.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? All right. So, we have a, a motion on the floor to approve George Whitesides, John Davis, Les Sugar, and Rusty Darby to the airport commission. I'll call for the questions. So, those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Six to one. The motion carries. Next, we have item 11B, the Chester County Historical Cemetery's advisory committee appointments. We have three applicants. Those are Natalie Paul, Neely Gaston, and Sandra England, England. Is there, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve Natalie Paul, Neely Gaston, and Sandra Anglin.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
This, 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 uh, committee, this is kind of the same situation, right? So, two-year, four-year, two-year?
These are.
Two, two serve the last two years of a previous term that, that resigned.
So, whatever we find out on the airport, we gotta look into this too, same way, right?
Michael Rick?
That's correct.
Okay.
How many people on this? Is this the same issue we got on the other one?
Seven. I thought, these are council. I think it's seven, isn't it?
So, it's seven on this?
Five. Is it really? And these are council.
And again, this is sometimes.
Yeah, might be five. That's right.
Sometimes these committees struggle with the participation.
Well, are we in discussion now? We are. We, we gotta fix this. We, we can't have five people. We gotta have seven people on these committees where each council person, six council people represent six districts of this county, and Ms. Mosley represents everybody. So, that's seven people. And we have got to have seven people that represent this county on these boards and commissions. This is not right, uh, to, to not have that. I mean, they do great work, do all that good stuff, but certainly, there are other people interested in that beside five. You know, we got seven members on the, on the fire board. Is that not right? Yeah, we got seven members on the role fire board.
Everybody, yes, sir. You're correct, Mr. Agee.
Everybody gets an appointment on that.
Everybody has an.
We got seven members on the planning board, planning council. We got seven members on the zoning board of appeals. We, we have got to have seven people on these, on these committees. That's just not right.
We'll take a look at it. Yes, sir.
So, we have a motion to approve these three, three applicants. Motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 All in favor. Next, we're gonna take these one at a time. So, this is items 11C, one, two, and three. So, starting with number one, the resignation of citizen member Bill Bundy. Mr. Hester, would you speak to that before we have a motion?
That's correct. Or yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bundy has resigned from his citizen mem- member, just so everyone knows, I can tell you about this, now, this one we do not control, this is set forth by the council of governments, our representation on this board is as follows, we have a citizen-at-large minority representative, that is Ms. Nettie Archie, and her term is currently, her expiration date is not till March of '26. We had in place an elected official, so you have one county council elected official, that one has to be replaced, it was Mr. Branham. Then you have a citizen-at-large, which was Mr. Bundy, Mr. Bill Bundy, and then you have a legislative delegation representative, that is Randy Ligon, who is currently in that position, it appears he'll stay in that position till November of '26. And then you have one elected official position, which is the mayor of Chester, the city of Chester, and Carlos Williams, the mayor, represents, or, or holds that seat. So this is a five-person set by the COG, and it outlines in there what, what the positions are and who must hold them. Mr. Bundy has resigned from the position to allow council the ability to place Mr. Branham, Joe Branham, who just retired, into the citizen-at-large position. Mr. Branham currently holds the vice chair position with the COG on the board, and will be moving into the chair position. And so, Mr. Bundy's graciously agreed to step down, so Mr. Branham can take the citizen-at-large position if council so chooses, since he is now cannot hold the elected official position. Chester having a representative in that chair position is very beneficial to Chester County, to have that level of position held by one of our appointees. So, Mr. Bundy has asked to step down from that position if council will consider Mr. Branham into the citizen-at-large.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hester, so, I will seek a motion for the resignation of citizen member, of the citizen member, which is Bill Bundy, is there a motion to be made there?
I make a motion, we accept the resignation of Bill Bundy as the citizen member of the COG. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Next, we have the appointment of a citizen member, is there a motion to be made?
I make a motion that we, that we appoint Joe Branham to assume the, how did Bill Bundy get on it? Wait, before we go doing this, did we appoint him?
Yes, sir, somebody nominated him in?
Ms. Archie?
No, Ms. Archie was appointed by council, she's been on since March of 2017, Bill's been on since June, somebody appointed him, I'm not sure who, of '23, I'm sorry.
I make a motion, we appoint Mr. Joe Branham as the citizen member of the Catawba Regional.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to, to have Mr. Branham serve as the citizen member for the Catawba Regional Council of Government, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, for this next item, I would say, if there's no objections, I would say that we, we would seek nominations for this appointment of a council member, and then we'll vote, vote on that once we have those nominations in hand.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint our council member Mike Vaughn to the Council of Governments.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Vaughn, are there any more?
Yes, I'd like to nominate council member John Agee.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Agee, are there any more nominations? All right, hearing none, I'll close the floor for nominations, and at this time, we will, I will go through the council, and if you will please state who you vote for, I will, I will go by order, if that's okay, so we'll start with District One, which is Councilman Agee.
I vote for myself.
District Two, Councilman Vaughn.
I vote for myself.
District Three, Councilman Rains.
Mr. Agee.
District Four, it's myself, I'm gonna vote for Mr. Vaughn. District Five, Councilman Guy.
I'll, I'll vote for my, John Agee.
District Six, Councilman Killian.
John Agee.
And the at-large councilwoman, Mosley.
I'll vote for Mr. Vaughn.
All right, so, we have three votes for Mr. Vaughn and four votes for Mr. Agee, is that correct? All right, so, Mr. Agee, you are appointed to the council regional council of governments to serve as our representative from council.
Thank y'all very much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Wilson, I'll send an email to the council of governments tomorrow morning notifying them of the changes to the positions.
All right, next we have the items 11D, E, and F, and I will read those aloud, if there's no objections, we can do this all in one motion, does anyone anticipate any issues with any of these appointments? Hearing none, I'll, I'll read them, and then we'll entertain a motion to approve. So, from District Three, the appointments by Councilman Bobby Rains, to the accommodations tax board is Laura Medlin, Chester County Library Board, Wiley McGarrett, Construction Board of Appeals, John Michael Helms, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Thomas Jordan, Planning Commission, Todd Love, Rural Fire Commission, Gene Hudson. The appointments by myself for District Four, the Board of Assessment Appeals, Ruth Ann Levister, the Chester County Library Board, Joanne Guyton, the Hazel Pittman Center Board of Directors, Carol Grant, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Laura Roberts, the Planning Commission, Trent Smith, the Zoning Board of Appeals, J. Scott Thomas, and for District Six, the appointments by Councilman William Killian, the accommodations tax board is Elizabeth Clayder, the Board of Assessment Appeals, William King, Chester County Library Board, Shannon Hyde, the Construction Board of Appeals, Major Williamson, the Hazel Pittman Center Board of Directors, Peter Skidmore, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Hiwatha Clifton, the Planning Commission, Azzi Lee Hill, the Rural Fire Commission, Donald Travel, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, Teresa Skidmore. Is there a motion on the table to approve?
Do we have to have a motion for that? I make a motion, we approve the appointees for those districts as read by the chairman.
All right, we have a motion, second, to approve, as, as read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, thank you. All right, this brings us to number 12, which is executive session, we have four items, those are, A, the discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, I want to just read what they are, that's Project P-2480, B is Project P-2492, C is Project P-2493, and D is Project P-2501. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.